We're alive, I can hear us.
All right. So I will call this meeting of the July 18th, 2022 Charlottesville City Council Hybrid Meeting back to order. First, we need to have a motion to get us out of closed session.
Thank you.
Who's got that motion?
I do.
Okay.
We're not physically visible. There we go. Now we are. I move that the city council members certify by recorded vote that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully attempted -- I'm sorry, lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This is a roll call vote.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes. And we'll note that Vice Mayor Wade is on a church mission trip out in Ethiopia at the moment, and I suspect that he's not joining us by Zoom tonight.
He is not.
All right. So the first, I guess, is there a motion to approve or amend the agenda? We have to amend the agenda in one particular in that we are going to be taking off of the consent agenda, the item for reconstituting the Charlottesville Planning Commission to achieve staggered terms. And as a consequence, we're also going to take up the appointments to the Planning Commission at the same time as we take up that resolution. Is that the understanding of everybody? Somebody want to make a motion to amend the agenda accordingly?
I move to amend the agenda accordingly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So from this point, we have three parts. First, the work session where we will hear and discuss presentations that do not require a council vote. Then we'll have a closed meeting, that will be at roughly 5:30. Then the City Council Business Meeting, which will begin roughly 6:30. At that point, there will be seating available here in council chambers for up to 23 pre-registered attendees and media, and any others able to join electronically by Zoom. So first item on our four o'clock agenda is a presentation of the American Rescue Plan recommendations, the city manager and his staff to present. Mr. Rogers, are you with us? You're muted.
Question to me, and I'll join you at your 6:30 meeting. We want to -- let me share my screen for this presentation, if I might.
I don't know who's in charge of that.
I am. Can you see it?
Yes.
All right. So, all right. So we received, as we've discussed in the past, two appropriations from the US Treasury for the American Recovery Act program. Our first was in May of 2021, for $9.8 million. And we received in June this year the second half of that, which was $9.8 million again, for a total of $19.6 million, which is a big help. It's been a big help for local governments in terms of recovery from the impact of the In 7/7/21, council appropriated $1.9 million for various programs. And the second appropriation was in November, was $1.1 million. And then a third appropriation and a fourth appropriation, the balance was $4.8 million in terms of previous funds. That left us with the balance. And with this year's appropriation, we have an allocated balance so far of $14 million. You can see that for the past appropriations, you did public health negative impact, $551,000. You did $2.2 million in negative economic impact, and public health was $2.2. All those helped in stabilizing the community. That left us with a balance to spend now between the two appropriations from the Treasury, So we are coming to you tonight with proposed appropriations that we'll come back to you on August 1st with action for appropriation after discussion. The -- you can see it laid out here in this, in how it all plays. I would say that from the prior budget, FY23 budget discussions, we had set aside $2.2 million, or 15% of our balance, to take care of those things we said we would do in the 23 budget, for the 23 budget. And then we leave an unallocated balance of 17% of the total remaining of $2.5 million for consideration, further consideration by council. We have, in terms of our recommendations for economic development, the Charlottesville-Albemaro Convention and Visitors Bureau of $750,000. This really is to help the Convention and Visitors Bureau recover from the economic impact from the downturn in the economy during the height of the pandemic. They receive their funds from a sinage of the meals tax, and when the meals tax went down, that was a tremendous economic impact on them. And it was by agreement that the county and the city would both put in $750,000 to mitigate the impact that they had from loss of tax revenue. Then we've been talking about the downtown mall improvements. As you know, as I cited in my city manager's report, we've established an internal committee to look at a number of issues on the downtown mall. We've been in conversations with the Friends of Seville about activity on the mall and improvements that could be made. This $300,000 is really to help get us started, get the committee started, perhaps some consulting funds, perhaps some other low-hanging fruit on the mall to begin with, to make improvements. I also should say that in a couple of years, we'll be facing 50-year anniversary of the downtown mall. And we'll be coming back with you later, perhaps after further discussion, with a proposal to create a task force, citizens' task force, to provide input on what to do in the future with the mall and how we sustain it for the next 50 years. We also put in $100,000 for wayfinding of some of the signs that need updating, et cetera. This was recommended by Chris Engel in Economic Development. Also, in Economic Development, it was recommended that we create a strategic investment fund. As we did recently with the parking lot, there was an opportunity to acquire some land that we needed. And we're parking this money here to be able to take advantage of future opportunities. And of course, Meadow Creek Trail, we talked about that before, and we've allocated $500,000 for that. We thought it would be more, but we think that we will receive some funds from VDOT for that. And so our balance would be $500,000. So that's about economic development. And that would be about 17.9% of our balance for economic development. The additional allocations are for internal infrastructure, $829,000 plus $200,000 left over from the 23 budgets, as part of the items there, for equipment replacement and facility repair. We put in $270,000 for human resources, these are for several staff positions, including Deputy Director of Human Resources. And we upgraded the position of the Labor Relations Specialist to make it a Labor Relations Manager, which I think we're going to need as we develop this labor relations program for the city for the first time. And of course, we don't have a recruiter, and so we're including a full-time recruiter in this budget for that. That will help in expanding our outreach opportunities to identify candidates for the positions we have, and that would hopefully reduce the amount of time we have to --
Thank you so much.
No problem.
No problem.
And also, we talked about council, updating the strategic plan. So we put in $200,000 so that we would be able to fund that process in the coming weeks. Now, in public safety, we've put in $1.4 million for the COVID contingency. We note that we've been going up and down, up and down, in terms of our status. We don't know how that's going to end, but we think it's prudent to put in some reserve funds, just in case we need to take further action to support the community or to make some changes in our own operation for, as a result of COVID. We have put in proposing $1.1 million for the Charlottesville Fire Department accreditation support. One of the key items that was reported by the accreditation committee was the need for three BDOT Battalion Chiefs, and one for each shift, creating incident command for opportunity for all shifts. And that would be for a two-year cycle. These ARP funds are for two years, we have to spend them by FY26. We are also recognizing that we've, you know, made some changes in the police department salary schedule to address the hemorrhaging we were experiencing there with the loss of personnel. We have the same kind of issue in the fire department and the sheriff's department. We are adding these funds, 450 for the fire department and 50,000 for the sheriff's department as retention bonuses for this first, these staff. And then, of course, there's been a lot of discussion on the Safe Roots to School Fund. We've added 500,000, though higher amounts were suggested. In talking with staff, we believe we have other funds in the budget that can actually exceed the amount that has been suggested in the past by some of the communications from people. But this is a high priority area, and we are offering that for your consideration. And then, for human services support, we've put in $700,000 for emergency assistance for pathways. This would be emergency rent subsidy. We put in $1.6 million for affordable housing and homeless services. And we did an agency investment fund. The two would be $2.6 million, and this would be done by a competitive process and separate from the vibrant communities because the Treasury requirements, the documentation, are different than vibrant communities, and so it would be a different competitive process that we're proposing. But that was for affordable housing, homeless services, and agency investment would be $2.6 million. For community health initiative, that would be, and I'll have Ashley speak to that, $500,000. If you're on, Ashley, you want to chime in with that one?
Yes, sir. The city manager really looked at the opportunity potentially to bring in support for our honest work in public health. So thinking of this funding as being available for a previously floated idea, the community care team, or something of that nature, in order to do a really needed and wonderful pilot to see what would be a best support for our community.
Right. And then you want to talk about Human Rights Commission and investigator administration that we're putting in there?
Absolutely, yes, sir. So in the previous revision of the human rights ordinance, council asked the Human Rights Commission if they would consider and look into the opportunity of becoming a fair housing support through HUD. They have looked at that and will present information, including required edits to the ordinance, should council wish to move in that direction. And if they do, HUD would require them to have an investigator, and also an administrative assistant would be needed for that work. So the city manager went ahead and provided funding for that to bridge them for this year, should council choose to change their ordinance and would like the Office of Human Rights to engage in that fair housing work as part of our holistic affordable housing program and processes.
Thank you, Ashley. And lastly, we put in $40,000 for a city shelter emergency generator system. If we had a catastrophe in the city, we do not have a city-owned place where people could gather to be safe. And we are proposing that we acquire this generator and work out the situation with superintendent and the school board for Charlottesville High School being that, the gymnasium being that place. This would allow us to, FEMA to back up an emergency trailer if needed, to provide electricity and other amenities in the case of an emergency. So in this allocation, we have considered a number of actions, both internal, that for our internal infrastructure, to allow us to work better, and also addressing the needs of the community. So at this point, we look forward, council, to your discussion on these items.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Counselors, have any questions for the city manager's staff?
Yeah, I have a few. This is really great news. Thank you for all the hard work on this. I don't know if Mr. Sanders is online. I don't recall with Meadow Creek Trail, how much money was in the CIP. I guess we were going to, the notion was to use the money from ARP to supplement that or to replace it? I don't remember that conversation. Can anyone speak to that?
Sure. I can. So we received a grant of $375,000 from VDOT for first section. This 500,000 is supposed to complete the second section, and then we already previously had the conversation that at surplus, there might be an additional 700,000. So that's what we're doing at this moment, is trying to piece together the various sections of the trail project as it's understood by the community at large at this time.
So at this point, you're talking about, you're talking a figure north of 1 million if you add all those pieces that you just described together?
From the city, coffers would be 1.2 million plus 375 from the state to pull off the project as it stands right now, with still updates coming, of course.
Say that again.
Additional updates as we move forward. We're trying to finalize everything at this moment, but that's what we're anticipating at this time by sectioning it off and then getting updated costs for construction.
That's very fantastic news. Thank you so much for that. And then if we could go back to the piece with, I know that in terms of one-off funding and not hiring people with one-off type funding like this is something we're trying to be careful of. And I saw with the fire department that you are using the money for retention bonuses and things like that, sort of one-time expenses. At another place in the presentation, I saw new staff being hired, perhaps, are these ones that will have sort of the caveat with their job description that this is grant-funded?
For the human resources positions, we are anticipating incorporating those into the budget. In fact, there are existing positions in human resources that I think one is vacant, and we'd be able to handle that. Chrissy, you recall that discussion with Mary Ann? Want to chime in on that?
There is one vacant position, and then the Labor Relations Specialist was included in the budget for 23. So this just provides a little bit more funding to upgrade both of those positions, and then the new position as well, one new position in addition to those two. For the recruiter, or the deputy city manager, I mean deputy HR manager, please.
So the notion is this is the first pass for us to look at this, and we could get a copy of it, maybe chat somewhere with you, and then it'll come back to us for the specific vote to be taken in two weeks?
Yes, we plan to come back to you on August 1st for your action.
Great, thank you.
Questions over here?
Could you discuss a little more in detail what the 500,000 for both the Health Initiative and Community Arts Initiatives would be specifically?
Okay. Ashley, you want to take the Health Initiative? Restate that.
Sure. So the reason why there's funding set aside for community health, and I am not exactly calling it a CCT, sir, is because at this point in time, we are very thankful to have our new deputy fire chief, Mr. Thomas, on. And so I know that our social services director, Ms. Sue Moffett, is working to meet with Mr. Thomas to make sure that whatever we propose to engage the community is a sound process and that will fit into the work of both our social services, human services, and fire department's community outreach. So that funding, you may have seen that number before, was the cost allocation for a two-year pilot of a CCT. But I do apologize that I'm not calling it a CCT only because that meeting has not yet occurred. It will actually occur tomorrow, and then we'll have more information moving forward.
And with respect to the community arts investment, suggested a set aside of funds in order to allow the city manager's office the ability to support events or festivals in our community that bring together our citizens for remembrances and celebrations and educational opportunities. While there will be a process created to access these funds, I believe that this earmark to ensure we can support those who engage our community, or that the city as an organization can engage ourselves, is an important one, not only for potential economic development and visitors, but mainly to assure our own community feels distinct, a distinct sense of belonging and engagement through community gatherings. So this gives us some flexibility. We've discussed over, from time to time, groups have come and sought funds from us to do various things, some festivals, some outdoor activities. And this provides some money to do that, and it also allows the city to partner with some organizations to pull off some of these very worthwhile community events.
Okay. Just a few more. The Agency Investment Fund, could you speak in more detail about what that could look like and entail?
The Agency Investment Fund, this is outside of the Vibrant Communities Fund, as I indicated. And this would be for other organizations that have come forth at various times, not to name any right now. And council has expressed interest in supporting these organizations, but it's been off-cycle, and we haven't been able to do it. This provides another competitive opportunity for these organizations to be supported after going through a competitive process and being in alignment with guidelines established by the Treasury Department for our funding.
The final questions about the Economic Development Section. I know you touched on it briefly, but is there any more detail to provide about what the Strategic Investment Fund within the Economic Development Section? Is that land acquisition? Is that just to be determined?
I think it could be land acquisition, but it does require, you know, further discussion. And before we come back to you, we will have that further defined. But it's not any land acquisition that we have in mind today. It's something that gives us the flexibility, should something come up, to pursue an acquisition that might be in the city's best interest.
Can I ask a question, follow-up on that? Could that fund potentially be utilized for local businesses if we start hitting a pretty serious economic downturn, who are struggling to flatten their curve when it comes to inflation?
I think that we can define it to meet the needs of the community. So yes.
And for the 750,000 to the CACV B, you mentioned some sort of agreement with the county and the city in the CACV B. What was that specifically?
Is Chris Engel on?
Yes, yes, sir, I'm here. I can speak to that. The Visitors Bureau, as you all are aware, is jointly funded by the city and county. And when the pandemic started and the CARES Act and the ARP funding was becoming available, there was a, it's not exactly a written agreement, but the city and county jointly looked at each other and said, "We should use a portion of this funding to backfill the lost funding that the bureau is experiencing because it's directly tied to the transient occupancy tax." There was a calculation done at the time, 1.5 million was roughly the lost revenue over the two years that the bureau budgeted during the pandemic. And the city and county agreed to jointly fund that gap. And so there's been a placeholder, going back to the original CARES Act funding, I think, to hold roughly that amount of money. There's a two-year lag in the funding cycle, so the money is now, wasn't needed two years ago, it's needed now because that cycle is playing through. The county has allocated theirs, and those funds have moved over to the Visitors Bureau. And this 750 would match that amount.
And I remember reading in the General Assembly's budget this year, they allocated money And I remember reading in the general assembly's budget this year, they allocated money to tourism boards. I believe for that purpose to help them backfill lost revenues caused by the economic impacts of the pandemic. Does the CACV B expect to tap into any of that money to make up that gap?
Yes, the VTC, the Virginia Tourism Corporation, was allocated some funds that passed through from the federal government to them for destination marketing organizations such as the CACV B. Some of those funds have actually passed through already. Those are for new marketing initiatives, not for revenue replacement, staff support, et cetera. So you received a presentation on part of that a month ago from Courtney Cukation, the executive director of the visitors bureau. And at least half of those funds that the city was allocated in support of DMOs has passed through. The other half is reimbursable and will happen over the next 18 months.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions, just thoughts would be. Given that state support, I'm a little skeptical about how much is really needed for the CACV B as well as what specific measurable deliverables we will get for that investment. And a lot of details to work out, so I'm not saying we're not on this path, but you know, just my biggest concern is that we're leveraging these funds as effectively as possible to make investments that will make longer term structural impacts or stand up something new rather than merely one off investments. And I see potential opportunities to do that, but there's a lot obviously to be determined going forward.
Yes, and tonight's presentation, this is the initial discussion. And we want to put these ideas out there for your consideration and so we look forward to follow up discussions on them.
To clarify with the community health initiative, would this be a good start to a funding source for a mental health community care team?
Ashley?
Yes, ma'am, it could be. I do know that there was a lot of support from the community around the community care team model and idea of being able to provide support and intervention. But yes, ma'am, it could be.
I'm sorry, what? The support and intervention?
There was, there seemed to be a lot of community support around the CCT when it first came up as a potential idea. But yes, ma'am, absolutely, this could also be used to support mental health work.
Okay, oh, oh, okay, not, okay. I think of community care teams as mental health, community care teams.
I've wanted to change the name, but that's what everyone is most familiar with at this point, so I've left it. But yes, ma'am, I understand the confusion.
Just wanted to kind of, I just want to make sure that we've got potentially funding for both issues, so. Because mental health has, as we are seeing as the pandemic is not over, but mental health issues have been definitely increasing.
Anything else?
And I want to point out, counsel, that there still, there remains a $2.5 million unallocated balance as well for your further consideration. And so I look forward to your thoughts on how we approach that.
And so I did have one more. There was $10 million for revenue replacement. Could you just help me walk through what that means and entails practically?
Okay, Chris Cullen, you are our mayor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So revenue replacement is one of the options available under ARP to local governments. This is one of the big differences between ARP and CARES. And so under the revenue replacement, the US Treasury offered two options to local governments. One is a standard $10 million deduction. Or they also have a formula by which you could calculate sort of a counter factual revenue. It's actually a pretty detailed formula that I did put the city's numbers through. Quite honestly, the numbers that came out the other side didn't really make a lot of sense. And they were in excess of the $10 million standard deduction. And so I think that's the recommended course going forward is to take the $10 million for revenue replacement. So that satisfies part of the ARP requirement. The other piece of that, though, is you can't just take the $10 million and put it in your reserves or invest it or whatever. You have to use it for, I believe the term is, for government services. And the way that's interpreted is you spend it on things that you normally would spend it on. And so in this presentation, many of these specific items that you see under economic development, public safety, human services investments, we're using the revenue replacement as the ARP eligibility piece. And then these government services is sort of satisfied as second prong of that test. And so that's really what we tried to depict on that page. And the way you would see it reported, we have to file a report with the US Treasury every quarter. That's how you would actually see it in our report is as revenue replacement. But then we would have this backup information in terms of how we actually spent that money. And as Mr. Rogers pointed out, the spending requirements in terms of the timeline for ARP is the funds have to be obligated by the end of calendar year 2024. In our world, that means it has to be on a contract or a purchase order or some, something more than just, you know, saying we're going to do this. There has to be some sort of a formal acknowledgement that we're going to spend that money. And then we actually have to have all the money spent by the end of calendar year 2026. And so obviously, as we proceed with the next, you know, with all the appropriations, we do have those timeframes in mind and remind any of, any other agencies who may be receiving these funds of these, of the treasurer requirements in terms of how the money is being used, but also these timelines as well. So that's, so the revenue replacement is how that factors in and why we have that listed in the presentation that you're looking at this afternoon.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Sam Sanders to kind of spend a little more time on the school safety project? We are proposing $500,000, as I indicated there, others have proposed more. Sam, you want to highlight that more?
That'd be great. In fact, that was one of the things I was going to ask specifically about, so fire away.
Right, so what I'll do is I won't tell you everything since we're going to be going into council meeting and the public needs to be able to hear all of it as well. But I'll give you the clip notes. What we're doing is working directly with schools, trying our best to make sure that their priorities are what we prioritize and what we do to help them through this process because we're seeing this as everyone's issue. We've gotten a number of different suggestions, ideas, demands, whatever you call it, on being able to figure out ways to make it possible for all kids to get to school safely. There'll be 750 additional children walking to school this year. What we're doing at this point is I've assembled a team and it's a cross departmental team of making sure that we have every individual that could possibly pull into this conversation to look at what can we do. We're prioritizing what the schools are requesting in the way of crosswalks, additional signage. Our goal is to lay out what will be a comprehensive plan of what we will implement between now and the first day of school. What will continue to be implemented past the start of school, which may be the first two months to get everything that we're identifying as a big priority. And then to go beyond that in basically rebooting our safe routes to school program. That's what this is really kind of synergizing at this time by allowing all this focus on what we've been doing and what we've been talking about doing. But there is an idea for us to be able to not only complement what the schools are doing in their own deployment of additional resources for crossing guards and faculty members or student members who will lead kids to school as a walking school bus scenario. They're going to deploy more of those this year. There may be opportunities for us to do similar ideas with staff as well as working with some of our neighborhood groups to more or less receive and approve what they're suggesting in the way of a proposal. Working with them to confirm that their implementation is exactly what we can approve, knowing that it will work and knowing that it meets the guidelines, what we're responsible for maintaining transportation wise. And then to also be able to go and inspect when they're finished to make sure that there's nothing that's in conflict with those rules. So that then we would be able to test and evaluate how those different deployments work through this process. This is definitely going to be a challenging time. But I'll also go back and add that this isn't just about kids walking to school. We continue to focus on the cat driver issue, looking for ways that we can make some improvements there, including having recent meetings with the county schools to look for some efficiencies in how they're managing their routes as well as ours, overlaps and then special needs, transportation needs that may occur as well. So we're looking at this comprehensively. And again, as a cross departmental process, we have at least four different departments that are engaged in this conversation actively right now. With me having hit the priority button for all of them to understand that means we drop other things to make this the priority for the moment.
Thank you. I've got a couple of other questions. First question, and I think you probably touched on this, but I was taking notes and wasn't listening carefully. You've got 1.6 million allocated for affordable housing and homeless services. How is that going to be awarded?
We indicated we will establish a competitive, a competitive process. And nonprofits will be able to participate that way.
One of the concern, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yes, go ahead.
One of my concerns has been that we have a number of nonprofits who apply for funding from us who may well be excellent groups, but they don't get their paperwork straightened out. They don't have a tax return or an audit or whatever the various financial requirements are. Are we doing anything? Or would we be able to do anything or is there a way that something could happen to help some of these groups sort of step up their game a little bit? So obviously, we, we want them to be, to show all the signs of financial responsibility with us. In many cases, these are organizations that I know are in fact financially responsible. They're just not very good about doing the, doing the paperwork. Might we figure out a way to help some of these folks perhaps get connected to the Center for Nonprofit Excellence? Or, or any of a number of other things that might be done to help them get their act together?
Excellent suggestion. Ashley, you had talked about developing some template applications that would help facilitate, make it easier for these groups, at least to meet the ARP guidelines. Any further thoughts on that?
Sir, the guidelines that ARP requires through treasury will be provided in the process of application. So each nonprofit that would wish to throw their hat in the proverbial ring will know what is required of them from treasury. So also please keep this in mind, this is treasury, not myself or Mr. Cullinan. But it is required for us to be able to report back accurately. As far as nonprofits and perhaps some of their needs and capacity building or organizational stability, I would certainly encourage those nonprofits to look up the Center for Nonprofit Excellence. It is right here in Charlottesville. And from my experience of formerly running nonprofits, a lot of us have tried to figure out how to weasel our way into these classes that sometimes are limited to individuals who are only here in central Virginia. In addition, for organizations who apply in the vibrant communities process, there is always an orientation that is given and there is always an olive branch extended for technical assistance. And many nonprofits do take our Department of Human Services experts up on that technical assistance opportunity. And I would simply encourage any nonprofit that perhaps maybe has some questions or maybe is a little uncomfortable with the documentation that they have, to make sure that they take advantage of that particular process. For the treasury funding, it may not be as easy to not have a certain document. But again, that is only because we need to make sure that anyone who receives funding from ARP, we're able to provide all of the information that Mr. Cullinan and his team need should we get audited.
The mayor was speaking about this ARP process and whether we could provide some assistance to that, to a group of nonprofits that may need additional assistance, the kind that we give to nonprofits and vibrant communities.
Yes, sir.
Could that not be arranged in this process?
It absolutely can be, but I really hope that all those nonprofits also apply in vibrant so that they have an opportunity to get that technical assistance under their belts, get that application process, a feel of it under their belts. And then, and then moving forward, I would be happy to provide that technical assistance to individuals. And sir, mayor, if you would like to give me a list, I'm happy to reach out to those nonprofits and just talk to them myself.
I would also say that you are a finite resource. And I would hope that the people who might benefit from your assistance could also benefit from the assistance of other people who might provide similar assistance. And so that's one of the reasons I mentioned the Center for Nonprofit Excellence. And there are some other resources as well. Perhaps we can talk about what some of those might be. But I'm conscious of the fact that we don't want you to burn out.
Yeah, yeah.
And I also don't want my human services team to burn out.
But it seems to me that there may be some opportunities to partner with some other organizations that are capable of providing the support for us. And we need to look at that. So I, I'm sensitive to where you are, Mr. Mayor, and we'll have further discussions around that to make sure that it's a successful program and the nonprofits that apply can have a successful experience.
Well, and one of the things that I think we ought to think about is that if we're going to spend 1.6 million dollars out of this pot of money, I doubt that that 1.6 million dollars is going to be there the next fiscal year or the next time we, we would look for, or the next time that some of these agencies might be looking for funding. And part of what has to happen, I think, is that a lot of these agencies need to think about where other than the city government, they might get their next round of funding. And whether that's from separate fundraising efforts of their own in the private philanthropy market, whether that is other grants, I don't know, but this leads to my next concern, both of which have the common theme of sustainability. The other piece of it is we're talking about a number of employment, a number of employees that we're talking about having the city hire. How many of those employees and how much money are we going to have to find in next year's general fund to make this, or maybe it's the year beyond, depending on how exactly when the money gets spent, in order to make these, these important hires that we've talked about, to make them permanent parts of government? How much is that going to end up costing us that we're going to have to budget for a year down the road?
Well, the, for the fire department, for the three battalion chiefs, that's about 550,000 a year that we would have to add in. We covered it for two years with these ARP funds. And with the human resources department, that's another, we estimated 270. So that's about 750, 800,000 that we've got to buy. And the investigator in Human Rights Commission, that was another, was that 140?
170, I think.
170, yeah. And so, you know, it comes up to be
It's about a million.
A little over a million, additional a million dollars that we have to absorb. Is that about right, Chrissy?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Are we, I mean, I'm going to bring this up again because I bring it up whenever we talk about future budgets, about covering the we talk about future budgets, about covering the fire department grant that will be expiring? And that's going to be about $4 million a year, I believe, that we have to find in the budget?
It's about $2 million.
Okay.
And we did talk about that in the budget process, and those will come on the last three months of '23. So in this year, they'll come on in March, and then we'll carry the full freight in '24. And as part of our discussions, we talked about setting aside, it was $2 million of the year-end surplus to cover that for one year, but eventually we will have to build that into the budget as well.
So the last sort of substantive question I've got is that one of the, one of the requests that has been made fairly recently in a, out of the normal budget cycle kind of way, has been for some funds relating to violence prevention efforts. Is that going to be addressed through the $1.6 million competitive process, or is there some other, other way that that might be addressed?
Yes, that would be an opportunity through that competitive process to address that.
Okay. Because I know that's something I've been getting a lot of questions about, so.
Right, right.
Anybody have other questions?
We've included that, you know, in our thought process, that's precisely the kind of program that we think that these funds could support.
Great.
Again, I wanted to thank you all for this presentation. It's very helpful. I guess this is a great problem to have, pardon me, it's a great problem to have, to have money we need to spend well. I guess just sort of a general sort of atmospheric reaction is that this is a lot of money to try to spend well in the time that we have, given our capacity as an organization, at least that's my impression. I know you all have been doing a lot of work around organizational capacity capability, and, you know, I look forward, as we have further conversations with a little more detail on what some of these things mean, the buckets are still pretty large in terms of what's in the buckets. And I'm assuming you all will have some sort of standing committee meetings or a team that is, that is reviewing the progress of this over the next couple of years. I know there's going to be a lot of effort involved in operationalizing this, but this is a great start, and I'm very grateful for you all to, you all doing this. Thank you.
Do we have other questions, comments from council? Any last words from the city manager in this respect?
Well, we look forward to our dialogue on this. This is meant to be a first start to set us on a direction and to address some things that we, we really need to address in the coming months, and thought that these funds would be a best, a good way to do it. It's not the end all, so we look forward to your suggestions and coming together on it, and by the time we get to August 1st, the August 1st meeting.
So August 1st would be when it would come up for a vote?
Yes.
Great.
That's current plan, yeah.
And is that, I mean, the one thing that is particularly urgent is dealing with the safe routes to schools. Obviously, August 1 is two weeks away, and we only have about four or five weeks before the beginning of school. Is, are things going to be moving along well enough to be able to do something before the first day of school?
We talked about that. Sam, you want to highlight that conversation?
Yes, sir. We do have funds available. As I mentioned, one of our drawbacks is that we've had some funds earmarked for these types of projects that have been stalled for various reasons. We can activate those funds as you're considering ARP and finalizing your plans in regards to those funds, but we most definitely can deploy the things that we have, resources as well as expenditures without any problem. It's just more or less building a project list at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Well, that's the only thing we've got on our agenda for the four o'clock meeting, and we've got some other things to be dealing with in closed session. Should we go ahead and do the motion to go into closed session at this point, and then that'll give us a little extra time to resolve some of these other problems?
Sure, I have that here.
Okay.
Pursuant to section 2.2-3712 of the Virginia Code, I hereby move that the city council close this open meeting and convene within a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, comma, A7 and A8, for consideration of future appointments by council to the city's planning commission and other boards and commissions, and legal consultation regarding compliance with requirements of Virginia Code 15.2-2212 and city council ordinances and resolutions, and consultation and briefing by legal counsel regarding litigation, Charlottesville Circuit Court Case Number CL21-116, because consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city, and for legal advice on that litigation.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, this we can do just by voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. City council will now go into closed session and will, are we coming back to the same link for those who are zooming?
Separate link.
Separate link, okay. Separate link for the 6:30 meeting, and we'll see you all, if there's anybody still out there, at 6:30. Thank you.